I'm D. I'm D. Please, leaders.
Yep. If you're by a stand, I think Mr. Luke is gonna lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'm D. Communications, three A is superintendent standing. What's up?
And as my board knows, superintendents are evaluated on their own set of standards every year, and so at each board meeting now, I go over one of my standards that I will be evaluated, just to let them and the public know. This minute, it is instructional leadership. And instructional leadership, the main thing. Where's that paper? Did I not bring it? Okay. Well, I must have left it in my office. That's okay. And the main thing with instructional leadership, as you guys know, in October, we have had our KSA test data release, which Ms. Norris will be going over in a little bit. But I have met with DAC, which is Ms. Norris, our district assessment coordinator, and we have discussed each individual school, right down to the district data. I've met with each principal, and we have discussed their own scores, right down to each content. We have talked about their next steps, which includes their action plans for student achievement, what they're gonna keep doing, what they're gonna change, just the monitoring of everything. And I have attended some school PLCs to make sure that the principals are communicating with their teachers and talking about what's going on in the classrooms. I have been into the classrooms while instruction has been going on, which has been fun. I love that. And so, that's been fun. And I have talked with, we had a meeting the other day, district level, as far as the co-op, SESC was over there, and we met with our district team on implementation, active implementation, which is the science of different things, and Ms. Norris is sort of over that. But it's just making sure that we have a plan, we have extra coaching support from the co-op, that are gonna come in and work with our schools as well. One thing too, not all schools had, which some of our higher performance schools did, were data walls, where you actually sort of name and claim it to each kid. Their data is up on the wall, and it's sort of like you just see where that kid's at. And so, that's one thing we're gonna do district-wide, and we're just going to see improvement there. So, that is my standard work. Are you ready for me to?
I'm D. Two information.
Amendment two. I don't know how much you guys know. Have you got that stuff? Cameron, yes. The first thing, I don't know if everybody knows this, but of course, I'm in public education, so I'm just gonna say vote no. They make it to where it reads, you want to vote yes, you think you're doing the right thing, to vote yes for vouchers. But what amendment two is, is it is going to take public school money, and it sounds nice and serious, far as, well, it gives my kid the right to go to any school they want to, in a private school, in a charter school, and I have this voucher. Really, all it is saying is, it's gonna take your kid's money, and it's gonna send it to that school. And in all reality, and I'm not being mean or disrespectful, I'm just gonna be very honest, private schools get to pick and choose the kids they want, the curriculum they use, the standards they teach, the testing system they use. And if your child struggles, if your kid has ADHD, if your kid is a special needs child, they will not take your kid. But once you go there, your money stays there. It does not come back to you and come back with you when you go back to public school, and only school that will take your kid. So, one of the things, this thing that Cameron has up, and I can make some copies, which if you just go Google amendment two, you can about find everything in the world. But this main thing I wanted to share with you guys is the five reasons why it would harm Kentucky. Amendment two is a proposed change to the Kentucky's constitution that would allow public tax dollars to fund private charter schools. So, the five ways. The first one is House Bill 563 already provides school choice. I'm not gonna read all of these. Like I said, I will make copies that you can take them home with you. But it's just, there's no need to divert funds to private institutions when the public school system already supports choice. So, with that bill already in place, that's sort of like where, if you feel like your kid can do better at McKee versus Tyler, you have the right to take that kid there. We're not going to stop you from doing that. Number two, selective enrollment practices. Private schools have the freedom to choose their students based on admissions criteria that exclude lower-income families, students with disabilities, or those with academic or behavioral challenges. Whereas, public schools, we do not deny anybody. Number three, tuition increases. This is one way they see it, especially in these bigger cities, in Jefferson County, Red County, Jessamine County. I've talked to those superintendents there, and you see it quite a bit. It can devastate them. But private schools will raise tuition to match the value of the voucher, as seen in other states. Private schools will do this to ensure they keep the same clientele they have always accepted in their schools. And it would negate any financial benefit for low-income families. So, there again, they hit us. Number four, lack of accountability in private schools. They can teach whatever they want to. And if they go, if your kid goes and they want to color all day, they're gonna let them color. They're not necessarily held to any high expectation. And five, erosion of public school funding. Redirecting public funds to private charter schools will weaken the financial resources of public schools, which serve the majority of students in Kentucky. And I printed this out, and this is specific to Jackson County. You can look it up on this website, and it gives all the districts in the state, and you can click on it. But in this alone, if amendment two passes, if Kentucky establishes a Florida-style voucher program, which would mean spending 30% of what the state spends on public schools to support private school vouchers, here's what could happen in your public school district. And it actually has the numbers, and our budget would reduce by 19%. And you're talking, it would cut 49 teaching positions, and we would lose over $5 million of our funding every year. And once you do it, it will start going up. So, it would devastate Jackson County, all rural counties, even the ones, like I said, in these bigger, in Louisville, Lexington, your big communities. And that's where you're gonna really see it more there than even here. But the more it starts getting passed, if we do it here, it would devastate Jackson County. And like I said, I can make some copies and let you all take it on our Facebook pages. I will start posting different stuff where you can go look, share it, but we just have to make sure the community knows to vote no on election day. I will have something put in the paper the week before, just reminding. And I've actually worked as an election officer, and I've had people come in, hey, what does this mean? Sorry, I can't tell you. Even if you read it, because it always reads, it does trick you. I don't know if you guys have realized that, or you know that, but they do that on purpose to the public. So, just remember to vote no and spread the word. Anything else? I think that's it.
I'm D. C. 2023, 2024 KSA test data, Ms. Norris.
How are you everyone?
Good. This is the PAX 270. John Litt, head of the attorney.
So, most likely, one of the biggest changes that you saw this year is that we didn't have a regular school report card. So, you can't go to a dashboard and see pretty dials. You have to go to KDE Open House, you have to select assessment and accountability, and you get a series of Excel spreadsheets that has everyone in the entire state listed, and then you have to filter to find Jackson County. So, it's not an easy process at the moment to find the data. So, I tried to prepare a chart for you that sort of summarizes all of that important information. KDE is moving to a new platform for the school report card, so we are supposed to have that nice, very user-friendly report card available to us toward the end of November, but it isn't currently available. So, if you've been trying to find it, and I had lots of folks who were clicking on the link that says school report card, because that seemed to make good sense, and then it would go back to last year, and that was very frustrating. But the platform has become obsolete, basically. So, they are transitioning to a new one, but in the meantime, hopefully, this will help you. And if you need additional details, and you wanna dig deeper into the data, I can give you that. So, Cameron is gonna run the slideshow for me. The most interesting thing is that we really don't have a change from last year. This is the first time in a long time that I've been able to say this year's just like last year. So, that is a change, and I'm thinking, I'm gonna have to look on Cameron's screen over here to see what he's on. So, just a reminder, we had a new CENGO 158 in 2020, and we've been transitioning in this new assessment system since then. So, in 2022, we only had what they called STATs, and that was basically students' performance in reading, math, science, social studies, editing, and mechanics, writing on demand, and then a quality of school climate survey. And we just had STATs. In '23, they took the STATs, they compared that to how people scored in '22, and the difference, positive or negative, became change. And they added change to STATs, and they came up with an overall indicator score or an overall score. So, in 2024, they once again are looking at STATs, and I'll let Cameron move the screen for me. They're once again looking at STATs, and that is basically how students perform in the content areas, and they're comparing that to how they performed last year, and whether it's better or worse, that's change, and then they apply that number to the overall indicator and the overall score. These are the different components that the assessment is based on. We have a combined indicator for reading and math, we have a combined indicator for science, social studies, and writing, and we have a quality of school climate and safety indicator. And that's applicable at the elementary and at the middle school. We also have those three indicators at the high school, but then we have additional indicators, which include post-secondary readiness, our graduation rate, and they end up having five indicators. The EL indicator is not applicable in Jackson County, so the percentage of weight to that particular indicator is dispersed across the indicators that we need carries. These are all of the terms, and there's lots of terms. We have status scores, status levels, we have change scores, change levels, indicator scores, performance ratings, overall scores, overall performance ratings, and then weighted indicator scores. The thing to remember is that a rating is a color. So, you think about the colors, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So, this kind of gives you just a graphic of all of those different indicators and how they fly into STATs, and it's basically our kids performing at a novice, apprentice, proficient, or distinguished level. So, those status levels are colors. Red is very low, orange is low, medium is yellow, high is green, and then very high is blue. So, as I said, they take our current year status score, they compare it to last year's status score, they figure out if a school did better, or if a school did worse. Whatever that number is, they either add or subtract to the status score, and that becomes the indicator score. It really is kind of simple math with a very complex system. So, they then determine these indicator scores, and they group them. Reading and math is an indicator, and science, social studies, and writing is an indicator, quality for school climate is an indicator, at the high school, post-secondary is its own indicator, and graduation rate is as well. In addition to that, it's weighted. Each indicator has a different weight, and the weights are sometimes different at levels. The emphasis is on reading and math. Reading and math counts more across all levels than any other area. So, here are the designations again. We've got the red, orange, yellow, green, and blue. And then this is how that all ties together for those indicator ratings. They have a formula, and they have scores, and they use this five-row chart to figure out if your change is a significant decline all the way to a significant improvement. And they give you colors for that. These are the cut points that they use to determine that. So, they look at how you did last year compared to how you did this year in STATs, they look at that point difference, then they apply this matrix, and they apply a rating. This is kind of what it looks like. So, we see that we have different scores per level. So, you may see an elementary school that has a certain score, and they're one color. You may see a middle school that has the exact same score, but they're a different color, because it has to do with the level and the cut points that are being applied to it. When you get into the spreadsheet, you may discover blanks, and sometimes those blanks are because the data is suppressed, and it becomes personally identifiable. So, they have a certain definition of what data they make public and what data that they do not make public. So, when you get into Jackson County's results, you will see some blanks, and that's because the numbers fall out in such a way that somebody could figure out the specific score that a specific child made. Federal classification is still on the table, and that is at the TSI status. CSR, which is the most severe level of federal classification, comes back into play next fall. So, at this time, we have no schools that are under a federal classification, which is very, very good. So, our accountability base, if you look at your handy-dandy sheet, what I attempted to do was give you the score and put it in the color that it represents. So, when we're looking at the high school, we see their color rating for reading and math is green, it is blue for science, social studies, and writing, it is green, the quality of school climate, it is green for post-secondary readiness, it is orange for graduation rate, and then the overall performance rating is green. So, you've got scores, that's what the actual score is, when you take STATs compared to last year's STATs, and what the change factor is, and how that comes up with the ultimate score, and then they apply the color ratings. You will see, toward the bottom of the page, I have the ribbon, which notes very low to very high. On the PowerPoint, I will say there are transposed low, the colors for low and medium. So, that's a little bit off on the PowerPoint, but it's right on your handout. So, low is actually orange, and if you look down through there, we do not have any school in the district who is in a low category. Everyone is medium, high, or very high. As a district, we are also either medium, high, or very high. And the district score is based per level, not overall. It's a level score. And if you've been to our district webpage recently, you're seeing reading and math scores pop up. That's a new legislative requirement that we post there on the ribbon on our district webpage, and those are current, along with the date on October 3rd with the public release and when they're released. So, those are current scores. So, just to reiterate, when you look at those overall performance ratings, we have two yellow, two green, and a blue, and that's at the individual school level. At the district, two green and a yellow. And our bright spots, McKee Elementary received the highest overall performance rating of blue. There were 97 elementary schools across the state that received that designation. That puts McKee in the top 13.5% of all elementary schools in the state. Jackson County Public Schools received a green overall performance rating at the high school. Statewide, there are 168 districts who received a rating at the high school level. That puts Jackson County in the top 1/3, so one of the top 33% of districts with a high school score. And then at the elementary, we also had a green overall performance rating. There are 172 districts represented, and based on our rating, there were 40 green and 10 blue. So, we're in the top 50 districts in the state at the elementary level.
Any questions?
What did they do to use to determine the quality of school climate and safety anywhere?
So, the kids actually take a survey, and certain questions fall into safety, and the other questions fall into survey. And then they score their responses on like a scale from 1 to 4, and I'll leave it 24. I might be confusing 4%. But it's kind of like how the kids perceive that, from like a low, I have a low impression of this, to I have a good impression of this. And so, the kids respond to each of those individual questions. They award them points for if that's a positive answer or a negative answer, and then they tally it up, just like they do an actual test score. So, like each test item gets a point or two points, depending on if it's an other response or a short answer or a multiple choice. Each survey question is earning points, and they get the variations on that spectrum of not a positive response to a very positive response. And then they tally it up.
So, our graduation rate went down last year?
It did. The graduation rate is based on cohorts. It's whoever comes in, whoever your kids all of them are coming in ninth grade. And then, let's say that we had 172 kids who came in at the beginning of ninth grade. And let's say that 105 of them graduated in 2024. They look to see where those 60-plus kids went. Were they a verified transfer? Were they a dropout? Are they still enrolled? Did they make it to senior year and fail? Did they make it to senior year and graduate? And so, if you have a verified transfer that doesn't count against you, and they basically say you started with 172, you ended with 105, we can account for this many going somewhere and becoming someone else's responsibility, and then they just divide that, what's your rate? So, our rate, I believe, is around 88%. The important thing there is, though, you get an extra year to make those kids up. And so, what we see is our five-year cohort rate this particular year was a pretty good rate, because we had kids who did complete, but it took them five years to do it. And that's something to celebrate, you know, they got that college, they got that high school diploma. And then they average it. So, the drawback is, instead of getting full credit for them, if they come out in that year four, you kind of have to divide that in half, because they average it, so you get partial credit. So, I met with the high school on Friday, we actually talked about graduation rate. We identified kids who did not come out with their cohort, and talked about, you know, what were some strategies or activities for those kids to make sure they're successful.
Did that COVID where people could stay back, is that passed, or would that have been accounted for?
That's still, we're still in that.
I just want to say, I have loved watching this bunch of girls.
The coaches are great, and I have to commend them. I mean, they're always smiling, and you can tell the girls love them, and will work their hearts out for them. And I just, like I said, I'm anxious to see where this bunch of girls goes in my four years while I'm here, but I'm excited to see them, because now I think they're gonna go far. So, I got to watch this weekend at the state tournament, and I just knew we had it, but you know, hey, I think they did great, and they're gonna get one before it's over with, and I just can't wait to be there to celebrate with them. But I do want to call their coaches up here first, because without these coaches, I just don't know what they'd grow up to do. St. Miley, Kelpin are awesome.
And Alex Paul, Renee, and you all can give these girls a plus. How about a plus? First, we have Addie Brockman. Hannah Gabbert. Emmeline Harris. Amy Isaacs. So, Karen Tinas. Hindley Mitchell. Deana Nolasco. Kaitlin Northern. Molly Craig. Jayden Smith. Roslyn Spurlock. Bradley Stewart. Alia Welch. The girls, I'm proud of you guys. Not all the coaches will just say anything or not, or not be able to sit on the spot.
First of all, I want to thank our student parent, but she's been there, and we really appreciate that. I mean, we see her, the girls know she's there, and we thank you for all of it. And I want to thank Jason, because he's been awesome this year. We slid out with no place to practice. So, he always makes sure that we had somewhere to go, and took care of us whenever the building was being under construction. And all the teachers, all the board members, all of them, and especially my parents, they have supported us. We've drugged them everywhere. We've had five million games, it seems like, and they're right there, and all some points, they just go with us. But of all, I want to thank these girls. They have, I can't talk, we're still crushed. We've been just invisible. It's awful. They have made it, it's not a job, they have made it a joy. They have brought something back in me and him that we've been missing for a long time. They have brought something back in me and him that we've been missing for a long time. They work hard, they don't complain, they, whatever we ask them to do, they do it, they're all over the place. They're easy, it's not a job with them, it's a it's a joy to play, it's been a big blessing to get to be a part of their life. They have taught me the same, I mean, they they pray, they help pray before the games. They pray at practice and it's all them, they're just, they're just a different um um. Enjoying getting to know them individually as well as on the court. They're funny, they're, you know, serious, or they've got the best personalities and all their personalities together. Make what it is a right team. And they have some kind of eighth grader, we're all babies, so we're all young.
Even our eighth graders are young.
They're gonna be fun to watch. I don't see if you can talk, he hasn't been able to talk.
I've been crushed, I can't do it. It's the hardest working bunch, I've ever crushed.
And I think that we feel like, I think we feel like the, you know, it's that last game. But we let them down.
Yeah.
They're, you know, it was us.
Yeah.
But I'll tell you what, they won the seventh and eighth grade conference, they're the seventh and eighth grade all eight conference champions, they're the sixth grade conference champions. The sixth grade won the big uh those twenty-something sixth grade teams in Virginia. And when the Rock Castle tournament, nobody that I wouldn't take them complaining, I don't wish to challenge anybody. Um, and my seventh graders, I only had, I had four eighth graders.
No one.
I had four eighth graders, one of them entered up six and couldn't end the season, but one of them was six and a half. Um, when we had two seventh graders, so that's what, we were both starting young, we had fifteen sixth graders. So again, I thank you all for letting us be a part of your life. And part of this team, and we love you at the bottom of our heart and.
You all fit every picture, and I do want to say the parents, and I loved it. Um, one of that that championship, Lindsay handed me on the back saying, welcome to Jackson County. So I was just like, it it got pretty heated, uh, but listen, it's the best parents today. Because you, if you can't go and support these girls and get into it, um, I mean, it's nothing to watch. Like I said, I'm excited to see where we're gonna go. Um, I honestly think at least it's like championships, you know, if middle next year, hand, ah, whatever, I'm ready, I'm, I'm all in. So, um, you all fit every picture.
I did want to thank the previous coaches because listen, they didn't, we didn't, they were well prepared when they had them, so thank you all that we ever had them for.
I don't want to talk now, it's like, I'll, 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 whatever you want to.
I also have to thank Ashley Duggan. Without Ashley, I mean, she had my game schedule, she knew what I wanted, she knew about everything, and Ashley gave her my game training sessions, the sessions. Took what this one, she gave me going and let you get me going.
Well, I mean, thank you to never be enough, first of all, to you for coming in and supporting our athletes. We've never had that before and that means the world to us and to them. They noticed every time we played and we thank you for that. And then with Kelvin.
We got all of our get to have to go.
One season right after the other. But with Kelvin and Mail, I don't think they really realize, you know, as parents, we know the time commitment, how heavy it is. But for two people to come in, take on that responsibility and not have any blood ties to one girl up there, I don't think people realize what that speaks. I mean, it it, that's incredible that somebody would be willing to invest in our children that way. And I don't think they realize what an answered prayer that they were because they came in and, you know, you know, basketball was the focus, but the the seeds they've sown into these girls, and I've seen it here and there, that is gonna grow long beyond what a a trophy or a banner before it would collect dust. That thing, the things that they put into those girls are much more valuable than that. And I mean, I don't think that we could have asked or or handpicked anybody in this world that would have been more perfect for this group perhaps. And so I I feel like thank you could never be enough for them because, listen, it's hard. I mean, half the people here have to run my kid to practice because I can't get them to work in time. So, I mean, to not even have to do that and to do it anyway, I appreciate that. And I appreciate Mr. Vaughn, he uh he always makes sure that all the needs are taken care of and he does a real good job taking care of our kids too. So I just, I thank all of you all as a parent, as a teacher, as a former coach, I thank you for the time and the love and everything that you've done. Where are we looking at?
Where are we looking at?
Girls, can you all, you're killing me, you're. Be honest, get on down, we got. You think we've not took a picture before? All of you, are you being close? Are you? All right, ready? Everybody look, one, two, three.
Thank you, guys. And we will say that you guys are more than welcome to leave because I know you probably all want to sit through all this, I know the girls will probably appreciate that. So you are free to go, we did thank you guys a lot.
No good apps.
Item six, approval of a second reading of the K S P A twenty twenty-four policy update number forty-seven. Amendment, procurement update number twenty-eight, in motion.
I actually have some thoughts on this. What was it, a couple meetings ago, we had to vote on the medical cannabis. I did not feel good about it in my gut before. It just seems like it's, I don't know how to, how to, it just doesn't sit right with me, I I regretted voting for it before. It just seems like, I know that you had said, Mr. Bellegio, you know, that you cannot deny a student their medicine. However, if we have to approve it, that means that there is some say about it.
And I can answer a little bit, what's likely coming, if if a student needs it and you don't approve it, we'll have to work with different parts of the school system to approve, like home hospital, half-day, if the student needs it, like there'll have to be mechanisms put in place. No matter which way you go on this, you're gonna have to put mechanisms in place to deal with it, when and if it's coming. And and it's not really if, it, there will be a student with it prescribed. You could bet within the first year of legalization, which starts in January. So it's, you definitely don't have to allow it on campus, but we will have to come up between me and Ms. Smith and some of her principals, we'll have to come up with some sort of mechanism for how it's gonna work for a student that needs it, you know, is it time to go home? Is it, you know, what do we do? And even, and here's the thing, even if you allow it, and it doesn't matter to me which way you go on it, but even if you allow, we're still gonna have to have those same planning meetings because you're gonna have to come up with who's gonna supervise, what's the waiting period gonna be before they're released back into the general student population? So either way you go, there's gonna be planning and there's gonna be work involved. But there will have to be something in place for students that are prescribed if if we're not gonna allow it on campus.
I mean, I I know that we all know somebody who has anxiety, depression, cancer, you know, all of the different conditions that, you know, this is is being used for. I mean, it, at this point, it's almost where unless it's high blood pressure or diabetes, you know, you can get that prescription because I was doing a little bit of looking today and the board that's over this has already been making recommendations as to, we need to add, you know, we'd like this, this, I mean, there's a whole list of different conditions that, you know, that could be used for. It just, it just didn't set right with me and I just wanted you guys to know where I'm coming from. It's, it seems like depending on how it's dosed, you know, it can be done given like before school, after school. And then I'm thinking about what about employees in the school system? Well, she she actually works for the school system.
I know, we had a parent that spoke about this.
Yeah, I mean.
Or you had a student or.
With employees, and I'll say it's employees would be substantially different than students. This policy is more geared towards students, employees, you know, it'd be like an employee right now that's prescribed the prescription pain medication. If that alters your ability to do your job, you're going to have to use sick time if you use it and go home. Like we wouldn't allow employees to be in a supervisor role of students while they're undergoing mind-altering medication. Doesn't mean they would be terminated for it anymore and that's, that's the next step and we'll, you know, K S P A's not sent guidance on this, but with legalization, we're gonna have to look at employee drug testing policies and policies for employees that have prescriptions, what are we gonna do, when are we gonna test? I mean, there's a whole, when these things go through from the legislature's perspective, there's a whole list of sub-issues that come along that usually aren't talked about or thought about. And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to not look at you all too, I'm just kind of talking. Um, but those are all things that truthfully, some of it's gonna have to be addressed as they come up because we're not gonna know how all this will impact different ways until we start seeing it happen. And once you see an issue, then you have to kind of address it once it presents itself.
And see, that that was, that was, my line of thinking was, you know, this is how it starts. And then when I found the um letters that was written on the committee that makes up the cannabis stuff.
The state board, licenser board.
And then the, what is it, Health and Human Services, they had made a recommendation, it was like, this covers basically anything and everything outside of being diabetic and heart. And so it 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 just doesn't set right with me.
I think this, I feel like, but you're smart this time, I feel like this is something that they're, they push through and it's just like uh giving people the right, the medical people, you know, they're they're very selective and you have to buy and whatever. So I think down the road and after twenty twenty-five January, then they're gonna have to, and from Rock and Reed, Jefferson County, Fayette, all of them, it's kind of like, they're going through the motions like we are, but then they're gonna have to adjust the guidelines on, like he said, who's getting it, which I would think, the nurses that we have in each day and how long they're there. They may be getting it before school, after they get home. There's, I'm sure several students that come to school that's on controlled medicines right now for ADHD and everything like that. I'm not sure how we handle that, but I'm sure we will have to adjust everything. So this is not just, if we send this student out, we can make.
Oh yeah, we can, the work can change, yeah, you can always go back and say, you know what, this isn't working, we don't want to do this anymore. And and that's, that's the reality of where this is going, no matter which way you do it. If you say no right now, we may be coming back here in March or April when this is legal and go into executive session, obviously like we do sometimes when you get requests for students to go on home hospital or to go on a half-day schedule, I'm sure everybody's sat in one of those discussions before. When we have those discussions, we may be having to have one of those discussions and saying, okay, here's why this student needs this, but if we change the policy to X, Y, or Z, then we might be able to avoid having to approve seventeen students going about it this way. And then it just becomes a choice of what's better for the student and the district and what what provides the best option for everybody. And that's, that's the hard part is we're in uncharted territory with this right now. So we're not gonna know the ups and downs of what we're gonna deal with either way until we get into it. Like we don't, the evidence of what is going on and the handful of states where it is legal right now is not enough for us to predict how it's gonna go here. And truthfully, I don't believe you'll see it stay at just medical marijuana for very long. I think it's the, I think this is the first step to open legalization in the next five to ten years and then, then you'll have a whole new set of problems as a board of what do we do with it when doctors aren't writing prescriptions anymore because you can just go in the gas station and buy them. And.
Yeah, see, I was, I've been believing that this, you know, it is uncharted territory and it's, it starts out, okay, like some of the pain medicines through the years, it was, you know, it was hard to get it and the next thing you know, everybody's getting it and it's different, but it's the same for me. But I just wanted to.
I mean, and I've talked to Ms. Smith about this some too.
How I felt about it.
You all vote however you all feel and I think me and Ms. Smith figure out a way to make this work. For the district, whatever you all want, if you don't want to use it on campus, we'll sit down and spend the next two months coming up with a plan for January, how we address it when the first student pops in that needs to use it and we'll come up with a game plan of how it's gonna work. And.
The one thing that was reassuring for me, unless things have changed from what I've seen and have read, is, you know, it's, it's the reviving of it and there's no smoking. Used to say that something I thought would change too.
And I certainly think you could, in the future too, if that does change, if you want to make it, you know, all the gummies or the cookies or whatever, if you want to limit it to something like that, I'm talking about things I never thought I'd say to a board meeting. If you want to, like, if you wanted to put some restrictions on the type of usage, I think we would be able to work through that. Because I I think for the people that are getting it prescribed, it's not, the manner of ingestion is not gonna matter as much as the actual effects of the medication. So I I do think there's gonna be some workaround there. Again, that's a whole nother issue that nobody's even worked through or thought through or talked through, that just, here you go. You know?
I mean, I, there used to be a TV show on Discovery and it followed people that was going to the dispensaries all the way to them sitting on their couch because they had glaucoma and they were high. And that's just a concern I have with students and students. But like I said, I just wanted you guys to know what I was thinking.
I slipped up to you all, if you want to vote on each table or you want to.
I'm going to approve it.
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Hysen?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Item seven, approval to the purchase of two new buses, in motion.
Moving approved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Hysen?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Item eight, approval of the K E T S first offer of assistance program, in motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Hysen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Item nine, approval of the pulse surgery contract for year-up students, sir, is in motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hysen?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Item ten, approval to admit the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school together, in motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Hysen?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Item eleven, approval to establish. Item plan, approval to establish reestablish positions?
Moving approved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Hysen?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Item twelve, approved field trips, need motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Hysen?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Item thirteen, approval of fundraisers, need motion?
Motion.
Second? Ms. Hysen?
Yes.
Ms. Cowan?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Item fourteen, nobody signed in for the company. Item fifteen, approval of the journey, need motion? Second?
Second.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.